Welcome to our work session. We will start, call this work session to order a couple of minutes to seven. And the agenda tonight is to talk about our attendance area development process. We're moving into some work around boundaries associated with North Lincoln maybe in particular. I have a lot of concern around where those families will, what school they will be attending. And I think we've outlined a process for addressing this particular matter. Maybe Steve you can start with describing what the process is and then we'll have an opportunity to add comments and questions along the way.
And I would note from the outset that this is a subset of a bigger issue. And I know that at the board table has been a lot of conversation about some more global issues within our elementary school boundaries that we need to discuss and some opportunities out there, whether they're things like magnet schools, repaired schools, or transportation issues, or other things like that that may help to serve, create greater balance across our attendance areas. And so this is nested in that conversation. The big concern that was brought forward to us, I think you've received lots of emails from parents in particular, from the North Lincoln attendance area that are saying, hey, we want to know where we're going because it's really affecting us, our families, our kids. And so this is a subset of that in the sense that it gives us an opportunity to address that smaller attendance area issue in a short condensed format involving fewer catchment areas. In particular here, we're looking at Penn, Garner, North Lincoln, and North Wickham. Those schools that would have fed into the Christine Grant Elementary School when it was initially proposed to be in the St. Louis Farms area. And now obviously it's going to reside inside that attendance area on the north side. So Penn and Garner wind up being intimately connected to that beyond those students that are in the North Wickham and the Lincoln attendance areas. And so the proposal that we'd have would look very similar if any of you have been through our attendance area processes in the past. Bring folks in on Thursday, January 18th. We walk through many of the documents that you have here in front of you so that they understand board policy as it regards our appendix five factors in determining school boundaries, walk through that. In the past, we've done some table work with folks to help understand which of those have the most relevance and saliency to the people who are present. Go through that process with them, share past and future boundaries so that they know where those lines are today, better understand where their concerns are about moving forward. And then we use that input to draw maps. And maybe this is just a short opportunity for a history lesson for you. We don't do maps in a live drawing format. Lori and Phil will remember our fund with the U.S. Department of Agriculture that we have to be very cautious about how we draw maps and share demographic data because of the potential to violate U.S. Department of Agriculture rules about student privacy information. And so we gather information from folks. We've done, draw up a set of maps. We would come back to them. We think we can do that very quickly with the software that we have available to us. We'd come back on January 22nd, on that Monday, with a first set of maps for them to take a look at. We could do, again, some table work with them to help understand what the pros and cons are of the maps that have been proposed. And then we have three additional meetings scheduled after that, which allow for an iterative process for that community input to help us make any changes to those proposed maps with the goal that at some point over the course of those four meetings, we wind up with a level of consensus from the community participants. And then we're able to bring a recommendation to the board through a work session. I have that conversation with the board. And if there are any changes that the board sees that need to be made, we can make those changes if necessary. We can go back to the community and have additional conversations about that and then hopefully come to a conclusion within a relatively short period of time.
And I think, you mentioned it, but the sense of urgency really did come from so many families communicating to us, the concern that they don't know where their students are going to school. And that's why the shorter, short process, very focused on these four schools in particular, that are part of that attendance zone question. And so it really is, it feels like it's a very targeted set of activities for one group, but we're acknowledging there's a much larger set of boundary discussions that we need to have driven by many, many factors. And you listed some of them in your opening remarks. So comments, questions from board members? I know some of the other comments that we've gotten as this work session was hosted from an agenda standpoint, questions around, well, Van Allen maybe should be considered in this part there. And you were commenting on this earlier, Sean. And so I think, you know, being very clear on what's in and what's out and why. And do we need to consider opening it up more than the four that you mentioned, Steve? I think that for me is a question that we've had feedback from community members on anyway.
I guess from a pretty generic statement, there is a sense of urgency now, which brought it up, you know, all summer long. We're going to have to figure out what our attendance zone is because we're not building a school where we were going to build a school. So everybody knew that was going to happen. What I don't want it to get to is we address the urgency, not doing anything else, and then next thing we have to do it, it's urgent again. I think we have to kind of look at it a little farther down the road. And while we may not be making dramatic changes between now and the 2019 school year, I think the conversations with all of those should be starting just as early or pretty dark close. You know what I mean? Like if we only are going to talk about that one little topic, we're just kind of kicking that can down until it becomes a very tight timeframe again. And I'd like the more time to have those conversations later on.
I agree with you. I think we need that larger community conversation. And Lori, you referenced this the last time the issue came up, is that opportunity to have, or maybe JP you did, I apologize, I know you were both talking about it, but that opportunity to have a larger community comment about all 20 attendance areas. And I think that, I think it's a good idea to start having a broader community conversation about that and whether it overlaps this or follows immediately thereafter. I think that the sooner we start that conversation, the better off we'll be. Because that'll take, that processing will take much longer.
Yeah. Other comments, questions?
No, I like the idea of having some overlap with that larger conversation following immediately after figuring out this new attendance zone.
I also think, you know, it is going to be difficult to keep this conversation isolated for these. I mean, you're gonna, because as soon as you start moving those dominos. So for example, you know, if, you know, in the larger context, you know, we had an idea of a paired school with, say, a man and a shimick, works better if man, if the ELL programming doesn't move to Lincoln, right? So that is a domino, right? So that pairing's not going to work as well if that programming moves, which then obviously affects this conversation and those North Lincoln parents. So I mean, and my guess would be, I mean, that's one thing that's come up kind of in my orbit. And my guess is as soon as you start pulling this Tetris piece out, other things are going to, oh, and then what about this? And so it's, I think we're going to have a hard time with these not overlapping. I think it's going to be difficult to, I mean, this is probably the easiest area to do it in because there's probably the least amount of disparity up in the north, that north area. But again, it's going to start hitting those other, so we don't, you know, I wouldn't want to kind of throw out some ideas down the road because we did this and well, now we can't go back and change that. So that takes out all these other.
And part of that might be the messaging process when we bring folks together is to help them understand that there are other issues that are out there that collectively the board has expressed a strong desire to address in the very near future. And just as, let's pick another attendance area. Let's, you mentioned Shimick, Lemmy, Mann. You know, the board made a determination that they would have new attendance areas in 1920, so they're obviously planning for that. But the board may revisit those. And I think that's an important conversation to have with folks here is to say, we know you want some level of certainty about knowing where you're going. And we know that the block moved from here to here. And so we can tell you that moving it from here to here, we're going to do these rearrangements for right now that are recommended by the community, but recognize they're nested in a larger district with other issues. And that when the entire conversation comes up, all the attendance areas are in play. So that there isn't any confusion on the part of people who are participating in the process, that it will be part of a larger discussion.
And do you think that with Lincoln in particular, we want to be careful about moving them too much since they're kind of the ones saying, tell us what we're doing. And if we tell them what they're doing and then change it, they're not going to be pleased with it.
Well, and they've been kicked around a lot. I mean, they've been moved, maybe more than any other school as far as, you know, junior high, split this, and they've had a lot of that.
They've been moved on paper a lot. I don't remember if there's been an actual movement. I mean, they will now, right, with moving next year into Hoover and then after that to another school.
And I don't mean their elementary, their high school, secondary.
Their feeder pattern.
The feeder patterns, I mean.
But even moving on paper is a process that families go through, wrapping their heads around it, now I'm going to manage this or whatever. So, I mean, I had a similar thought when you were describing, yes, we'll attend to this first thing as a priority need and that it may change as we look at the bigger picture. I agree with that. We need to be careful that we're not moving kids for one year and then changing it because the broader picture says we need to move them year after that.
The other alternative is to simply say, we're not going to address it right now and we are going to enter into a larger discussion. The downside to that is then we'll have to make sure that those parents understand that they'll be left with a significant level of uncertainty likely into the next school year.
Yes, that's a concern, I know.
I guess JP said they're going to start to weave themselves whether they like it or not. I mean, I, you know, we're not going to start discussing boundaries now, but it just, as if, you know, looking at North Lincoln, it makes sense to put that boundary to have it go to, you know, Grant when it was farther south. And then, you know, you kind of take that off the table. Moving them north just because that's the easy way to do it makes much less sense now. And unless you're going to start bringing in all of those other changes that are farther south, you're making them do something that doesn't make a lot of sense, to me personally anyway, but not to everybody else, which is fine. But I do see how it is going to be hard to isolate it in a meaningful conversation.
Yeah, I think we're very quickly, we're going to run up against all kinds of.
So since that's the Tetris piece that's sort of teetering, the domino is teetering, do we need to just deal with that, that North Lincoln piece and have some clarity on what that's going to look like?
I feel like starting the conversation and having these sessions, drawing up some options, getting some data and concrete things to look at and see what, we pull this piece and what are the ripple effects? I mean, until we get into the process, we're speculating. But I feel like we need to roll up our sleeves and do some of the work and see what the impact is and engage with families and get their points of view along the way. And we'll learn and we'll see, can we manage this fairly, discreetly? But then acknowledge we have another big way of work that we need to engage in to move forward with the broader set of elementary boundaries that we've all set as a big priority. But I feel like until we actually start the work, we're speculating and we just need to get into it and see what the picture looks like.
I think that's true in that when you really start to look at specifics and putting neighborhoods in places, like that's a lengthy process. But I think that kind of a high level, I think at these initial conversations, you can say, if we kind of go down this path now, these couple of things might happen. And maybe you'll have, you redistrict sooner than later again. If we do this now, maybe it will be several years before that happens again. If we do this, we're going to have a split feeder system. If we do this, we're going to have a neighborhood maybe doing somewhere, right? Like we could, through those scenarios, can kind of at least put out there, these are future steps that would have to happen because of what we're doing now. The specifics can be now, and that stuff can start those conversations. And I think that might lead the, lead us in the direction of where we want to be, you know, in a year and a half, which is where we have it between, you know, people at school.
So start, we should start.
Here, my, what is, is it this week?
Next week.
Next week.
Thursday.
And I was looking, do you have a document that has like your timetable and some things like that?
Yeah, it's on there.
It's on the last, it's in here, end of December.
Okay, but I didn't see this attached to this discussion.
No, it's on the, it's on the district website.
Okay.
Yeah, because you sent, we sent a message out, didn't we, talking about, is the process, yes?
Yes, let's see. Ooh. I apologize, it did not come over in the public section when we posted this. We pulled all the documents over, but we did not pull the agenda over, so.
Sure, we just add that so anyone who comes here, they see the timeline and everything.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we do, we have to start because we're speculating, things are going to come up either way, and we have to see what they are and to be able to talk about them specifically.
What concerns me is, is the board not revisiting it though until the communities have four reiterations of maps provided to them?
Well, I think if we have, you know, something with, I mean, the problem, we have a couple of problems. One, we know that we, as a board, want to tackle the disparity in our elementary schools, right? That seems to be a really clear thing. And we're growing really fast, which, so to have certainty in that environment, I think it's pretty, it's going to be a pretty hard to make any, I think it's just going to be hard to have certainty. And so it's going to be very hard to promise families, this is definitely where you're going to go to school for five years. Even if we weren't going to do anything about disparities, we're just growing and that is going to change. And I think North Liberty, you know, probably at North Quarter, it's happened a lot up there, right? Just because it's grown so fast, you have, you know, there's not, there's very few people in North Liberty who have a, you know, 15-year attachment to any school just because it's grown so fast. And so I think, you know, and again, I, I mean, I really feel for Lincoln, you know, just because, and I had, you know, some, you know, my daughter went through that whole split junior high and are you going to go here? And it was just very hard as a neighborhood, I think, to come in and know that you're having that, you know, just that whole, I mean, a clean feeder provides some nice community opportunities. And I don't know, I don't know if we're able to do that, you know, anymore as cleanly just because of the size of our district. So I don't, I think it's pretty hard to sell continuity and consistency in what we're doing.
So I want to make sure I was capturing your concern, Lori, that we're starting the process and I pulled it up, so we've got a variety of community meetings, we've got the inputs, you'll be drawing maps, redrawing, bringing up things back. The board engages at the end of February in a work session.
But could on February 13th?
We could get an update.
Put a work session in there on the 13th?
Yeah.
There's still a lot of meetings that the community sees maps before we see them. And I just don't want the community to feel like we pulled the carpet out from under them if we make a major change and then they say, well, why didn't you tell us that to begin with?
We could do January 26th, too. So those are both options for us, the 26th and the 13th, so that we're kind of back and forth, back and forth with them.
Or even a work session after the 23rd meeting. Yeah?
So we've got, so we've got a regular board meeting on, I'm sorry, 23rd, not 26th. Yeah, the 23rd and then on February 13th.
Do we have an operation on the 23rd?
Do we? Yeah.
But maybe that should be moved because this, I mean, this really, I think, needs to be dealt with before we give the wrong messages to people. Every, my opinion.
The operations, sorry.
I can pull them up and take a look.
Yeah, so I mean, work session after the 23rd to get, you would have had two meetings at that point.
And then maybe on the 13th, too.
So that we've got these touchpoints throughout the process. I think keeping us engaged, I think, so there's no big surprise at the end. I think that's a good point.
And then literally it'll be in every other one. So we'd have the 18th, we'll draw the first map on the 22nd, come to you on the 23rd with feedback from that meeting, meet with them on the 29th, and again on the 8th, bring you back maps on the 13th, meet with them on the 19th, take anything back, come back to you on the 27th.
That feels pretty good to me.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's good.
Trying to find the schedules.
Your student potential analysis from your demographer will be March 1 or sooner. So it could be available hopefully by that last meeting in February.
Fantastic. That was also a question that came up, why don't we wait for that before we do any boundary work? And so this way, we won't have it when we start, but we'll certainly hopefully have it before we finalize and we've got a touch point and can see if we need to make any adjustments based on that. I think that's good.
And Greg, that's the deep one, the deep look at things? Yeah, great.
All the housing starts.
Shaking the bushes and all that. Yeah, good.
Any other comments, things people want to raise as a point of discussion tonight?
I'm just wondering, so we'll have our touch point on the 23rd, but there will already be a map out to them. Do we have any guidance that we want to provide as, as much as that now? Is there anything? I mean, speaking for myself, I would say that I would want to have all options considered. I wouldn't want them to be told, Steve's board, stay in his boat. The cluster thing that was tried in 2014, that's, do you get where I'm going with that?
I do.
To try and stay away from that model where you have to stay in the cluster and you can't step outside the cluster. That, I'm not sure that's the right approach here, in my opinion.
Can you describe the cluster?
Yeah, yeah, help us. That's actually when we started to have our fund with the U.S. Department of Agriculture. So part of what we did was we tried to look at our demographic groups and say, okay, if we can work within smaller geographic areas in the community, we can try to maintain some better balance. The difficulty was where you drew those, only work in this area, this area, this area type of thing. So if you think about having 20 elementary schools, if you were to try to say, okay, we're going to do four of them, but only in here, not across the line over here type of thing. And we tried to do that by saying, okay, can we get four, five, six like-type clusters of demographic characteristics of students so that within there, we can try to create some better balanced elementary schools? That was a bit of a challenge for us.
It seems like a worthy attempt. I mean, the intent was good.
It was good. Came out of the diversity policy, for those of you that are real historical.
But you think it works if we're not?
No, it did not.
Okay.
This is a lot of all the versions.
Got it.
You'd only go one way. You might be right next door to something that would be.
The only real cluster you have is either east of the river or west of the river. That's really the only, when you think about it from a demarcation standpoint, that really only becomes a transportation issue more than anything else.
Yeah, I mean, it is kind of an interesting question, though. Are there certain guiding principles that we use?
Right here.
Okay.
And I apologize because I keep forgetting that from who remembers what, who's been here, et cetera. One of the key things that we go over with community members when we first get together is appendix five. And these are the parameters that the board set up. And I don't have, I don't think scroll down far enough for you to see it, but you see that there's, back in 2007, it was at least one of the first conversations that the community had about this and set these 21 parameters. But we go through a process where we ask them to have the conversation at the table to help us understand what at each table are their five top priorities within this set of factors. And then that helps us understand what their thinking is about, what are those things that are most important for us as we're trying to draw some type of attendance areas that match the expectations of the community members. So these 21 factors are in no order. I always remind people, and especially when we get together with the general public, to be honest with you, they were cast in place before any of us were here. And I'm not sure why they were placed in the order that they were. So they're not alpha order or anything else. I'm not, I'm not sure what the rationale was, so just look at them as not numerically most important, least important, or anything else. They're just up there in a numbers one to 21.
They're pretty good, though.
And they're very comprehensive. But as I think Lori and Phil were here last time around and will remember, many of these contradict each other. So you can't have this one and that one, it's a this one or that one. And that was, we spent a lot of time with that at several of the meetings when we were going through attendance areas the last time around, trying to figure out if it's an either-or situation, how do we prioritize these? It won't be unanimous. We won't have full consensus from the community. We did not receive it last time. I doubt we'll get it this time. There was a clear plurality for some of them that rise to the top and people say, we like this one. But there are some of them that really are third rails. I mean, you can really spend a long time in community conversation and not come to consensus that it's a positive or a negative when we're drawing those lines.
Take number nine for instance, I know that in the meetings that I've been in, there's always been a really strong parent component that they want neighborhood schools. And it's real important to our parents from the meetings that I've sat through. And yet that precludes gerrymandering and kind of boundaries, right? And so that, then that becomes very, very difficult to achieve the ethnic diversity and the, you know, the poverty, diversity and all those kind of things that we're trying to achieve as families.
And neighborhoods are really hard to define. Lori and Phil remember that from last time around. Paul, you might have been a part of that. I can't remember who else was here, but we really struggled with that the last time around. If you look at, for instance, if you go out to the Johnson County plat map, you know, subdivisions in areas of town are developed. I mean, even go downtown. If you look into the plat map, it will list a neighborhood. That may have been there historically at one point in time. It may no longer be relevant. You know, we found some issues where roads that used to be too lame, kind of 25 mile an hour pedestrian type of friendly traffic on there no longer are. And people on the other side of the road consider themselves not to be neighbors because of the boundary that the transportation presents where on paper, it might look like they're part of a neighborhood. I got to walk lots of, walking school bus routes the last time around because we had groups of people that said, I'm not part of that neighborhood, I'm part of this neighborhood. Come walk with me on the way to school and see why we're part of this neighborhood instead of that neighborhood. So number nine winds up being, from an operational definition standpoint, somewhat difficult to come to consensus, if not impossible. How big is a neighborhood? How small is a neighborhood? Those were all questions that.
It's just how you define neighborhood school, right? Some people say it's the school closest to you, and some would argue that it's the school that your neighborhood goes to.
Now, listen, discussion too about straight feeder versus neighborhood school, too. And they're both not necessarily the same thing either. Because some people avoid wanting a feeder system and not have that changed, but wanting neighborhood schools, and we talked a lot about, those are two different things.
So that's some of the best discussions, the appendix five discussion at the beginning of the first meeting. Might give us some foreshadowing for the next set of work.
Well, I don't think that later meetings are going to be this quiet.
No, it's probably good to go up to a quick start because we need to pace ourselves for all these following conversations. So I think the addition of the work sessions on the 23rd and, sorry, what, the February?
February 13th, yes.
Good additions, help us check student potential data will hopefully come in. Do you, do you have a sense when that's going to be, like you said, the end of February?
Well, there's, our contract says the deadline is March 1, but they believe they can deliver it sooner. And I'm optimistic that they can. And I'll be in touch with them in a few weeks and just see how they're doing. And kind of get a better feel for it. Push them along.
Yeah, a little bit of prodding.
Encourage them to do it faster.
So if we would get that significantly earlier, which would be like hitting up February or something.
Sure.
I don't know that I want us going into a process saying, we're going to be done on March 1st or whatever, and we'll see, March 6th. Or vote, I guess, on March 1st, which would be after spring break. But the community meeting is here and before we necessarily have processed that information. So maybe things should be spread out a little more, I don't know. Or at least, at least make promises maybe that this is.
I think that's, I think that's the key.
I think we set the expectation that we may need more discussion based on the findings of that data and the impact of it.
A lot of that data is directly related to growth. And these are growth areas, so.
Yeah, I think that's right. You just can't make promises at this point because we don't have all, we need, you know, it's hard to balance. There's urgency and we have to move quickly. And at the same time, we're going to have data coming in that may change what we're doing. And so we just have, I mean, that is what it is. And we can't, I think you'd be irresponsible to ignore the data, obviously, and/or to make promises based on information we don't have.
Maybe one bit of good news is that the last time we went through this, the board Maybe one bit of good news is that the last time we went through this, the board at the time, I think, tried to convey, I don't know whether it took or not, but tried to convey to the community that attendance areas are not immutable. They're not, put them in place and then never ever visit them again. We'll see them in a generation type of thing. But there was a recognition, we were gonna have to come back to them over time. And, and again, it's, it's a blessing of living in Iowa City is that we're growing. And, and growing districts struggle with attendance areas, you know? It's, it's, in a sense, if you're gonna have a problem, it's a good problem to have.
You know, I think in '09, when we did redistricting, it had not been done for 20 or 30 years.
And that was the problem that the board had, I think it was the last board that had said, that was the problem. Because when you don't visit it and it sits and sits and sits and sits, and then all of a sudden you do something, it's a catastrophic event. Where if you do it on an ongoing basis and you revisit it on a regular schedule, that people become more attuned to the role of change in the process and more comfortable with it because it's not this once in a lifetime event.
Okay, so we've added some work sessions before. We're not setting, make, make no promises. We, we look at the data that we have and analyze it and make adjustments as needed in our process and timeline.
Are these meeting dates that you have out, I mean, are those set in stone or if you, if we see things need to take more time, maybe you spread them out?
I think that's one of the first things we advertise when we get them together. Yeah. Yeah, this is an opportunity for us to get input. We may need more input. The board may need more input.
And when you have those meetings, are those gonna be just open to whomever?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. We make specific invitations because we really wanna try to get some of the folks there that are most impacted by, especially those that have been emailing with concern. We wanna make sure that they have the opportunity to come in, have their voices heard, be part of the process. But yeah, they're wide open, public meetings.
Okay, any other comments, questions, points for the cause on this topic? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. All right, great, thanks, everybody.